That's fine, I mean it's gonna capture him here on YouTube. Mayor, Mayor? We're ready.
Okay. Everyone's attention please. I'd like to call the meeting of the City of Fairway to order. This is our regular city council meeting for Monday, December 11th, 2023. It is 6:34 PM. There are no announcements, if you'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is a presentation that Chief Thurlo will be making. It is for a citizen life-saving award. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna have Officer Metz come up and help present the award to Mr. Kimmerline with me. Officer Metz was working a while ago. I advised the council of these actions that Mr. Kimmerline took that were truly heroic. The letter that was presented to me by Officer Metz pretty much speaks for itself and I thought he nailed it. So instead of me just repeating that, I think it would be great for him to read that to you.
Hello, for you who don't know me, I'm Officer Robert Metz. I've been a police officer in Fairway for two years now. So my honor to be here tonight and read this letter to you. Dear Chief Thurlo, I am writing to bring your attention to an extraordinary act of heroism displayed by Kurt Kimmerline, whose quick and decisive action resulted in saving the lives of two workmen. I believe that this individual deserves the utmost recognition and consideration for a life-saving award. On Monday, June 19th, 2023, I was dispatched to a lawn on fire. Upon my arrival, I contacted Mr. Kimmerline, who had reported the fire to the fire department. I contacted two other men who were in the backyard and had gotten the fire under control with a personal fire extinguisher. The fire had consumed approximately 20 square feet of the backyard and consumed a lawn chair, which was on the patio. The two men told me that they had been doing work in the crawl space of the house when someone banged on the front door. The men advised that they were going to continue their work, but the banging persisted. When they went to the door, Mr. Kimmerline told them the yard was on fire. I followed up with Mr. Kimmerline, who advised that he had been driving down Row Avenue when he had seen the fire and proceeded to the house. He observed the work truck in the driveway and knocked on the door to alert anyone who was inside the residence. I have no doubt that if Mr. Kimmerline had not taken swift action, the fire could have moved to the house and trapped the workmen in the crawl space. In light of these extraordinary circumstances, I wholeheartedly recommend that Mr. Kimmerline be considered for a life-saving award as a testament to his exceptional courage and dedication to the welfare of others. The selfless actions demonstrated by him undoubtedly embody the spirit of heroism that we deeply admire and strive to cultivate within our community. I kindly request your thoughtful consideration of, or thoughtful consideration of this recommendation and urge you to initiate the necessary procedures to acknowledge and honor Mr. Kimmerline for his heroic act. It is my belief that the recognition and celebrating such acts of bravery will not only highlight the importance of community engagement, but also inspire others to step forward and contribute to the well-being and safety of our fellow citizens. Thank you for your attention to this matter. If there's any additional information that you need, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. I have full confidence in your judgment and commitment to upholding the values of the Fairway Police Department. Sincerely, Robert Metz.
Thank you. So obviously, when I got that letter, I said yes, 100%. Contacted Chief Chick with Consolidated Fire, he cannot be here. Battalion Chief Sanders is here on his behalf. We'd like to present this award and Mayor, if you'd like to come down, we'd love the opportunity to take a photo with you and all of us with Mr. Kimmerline for his heroic actions and the presentation of our citizen's life-saving award.
Great job.
Next on the agenda is the swearing-in of the new elected officers. But before we do that, I would like to take a moment to thank the outgoing officials, elected officials. John Allen, thank you for representing Ward Two. I have enjoyed working with you very, very much. I hope you've learned a lot about the city, about the operations of the governing body through your time on the council. We live in a great city and you helped contribute to it continuing to be that great city. I have this for you. All right, for the swearing-in of the new elected officials, we have two incumbents who are being, have been re-elected. Joe Levin in Ward Three and Jen Abrowski in Ward Four. They will be sworn in along the two new individuals. One is Lee Story. Lee, if you'll stand. Lee is representing Ward One and Jerry Williams is representing Ward Two. If all four of you will please stand in front of the dais to be sworn in. Abby Aldridge, who will be performing the swearing-in. Abby is our city clerk. This is her first official responsibility since being promoted to that position. Abby's been with the city for many years and has certainly earned that promotion and we are very happy to have her. And Abby, take it away. Thank you to all four of you and may I say congratulations and welcome and welcome back. We now are going to recess for 20 minutes. We will reconvene our city council meeting at 7:05 for a reception in our multipurpose room. And all of our guests here are welcome to join us. Recomine. For those of you that are new, one of my pet peeves is beginning late. Did you just gather that? Keep that in mind. Also, for those of you who are new, the mic in front of you, leave it off unless you're speaking. Remember, remember if, when you touch the button and it's red, it's on. Don't get caught on a live mic. That's what that means.
Mayor, if I may also just mention, there'll be a red folder coming around the dais and that's, in that red folder will be the Claims and Appropriations, which is the ordinance, which is within the packet. And that just represents all of the live checks that will be sending out after the city council meeting tomorrow. So there's a spot for each council member to sign on the last page of the Claims and Appropriation. Also in that folder will be any bits of media where Fairway is mentioned. Our staff will print that out and put that in the folder just so you can see that as well. So that will circulate at the beginning of every meeting and end up back with me.
When you speak into the mic, please, please talk directly into the mic. Don't sit back because... Are you guys okay over there? Don't speak, if you don't speak directly into the mic, the audience and your fellow council members cannot hear you. Nathan has a tendency to do that sometimes. All right. Next on the agenda is the monthly report of standing committees. Consolidated Fire District Number Two. Chief Steve Chick is not here this evening, so we will let his report stand as submitted. Admin and Finance, Nathan?
As you can see, the Administration and Finance Committee did meet on November 27th and you can also see that we had a very, I'm sorry, the 28th. And you can see that we had a very busy agenda. So just to highlight a few things, we do have our citizen satisfaction survey out and I do not have an update for you today, but as of the meeting at the end of November, we had received 175 responses. We do have the facility needs assessment for the PD is out, for the request for proposals is out. I have, it was sent to six different firms and we have one that has responded that they will not be participating and then some that have responded, they intend to provide an RFQ by Friday's deadline. Probably the biggest item that we had at the meeting for the Administration and Finance Committee meeting was work by Director Stogsdahl, where he created a five-year plan with the Millan overlay as well as then he overlaid the stormwater work for the next several years over the top of that. So that was a much anticipated presentation for the city council at the, at the meeting. And then lastly, I would just mention also at the meeting, and Bryce may touch on it during his report, but the committee discussed and told staff to move forward with moving with the park restroom design as laid out, where we'll be creating a separate entry into the existing bathhouse and then designated one of the two restrooms in that facility for a year-round park restroom as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for the administration report.
Any questions for Nathan from Council? Thank you.
Okay, so Finance Report, I will let that stand as submitted, but just a note that we are anticipating about $750,000 worth of transfers into the CIP fund by the end of the year. We had budgeted to transfer about $463,000, so we are able to increase that based on the available revenue as well as the department heads keeping their spending in check as we move through 2023. So about $750,000 will be transferred into CIP fund, which means we will be almost fully funded through 2026 for CIP work.
Any questions on that report? Okay. Police Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with some good news. Officer Westhoff has completed her field training with her field training officer and is on her own, which is very good news. Officer Metz has completed firearms instructor school. So he adds to our cadre of instructors. That's a very difficult school to pass. He has to be very proficient, very, very proficient to complete that and he did that a couple of weeks ago. Some of the things I'm gonna mention occurred last month and then some of them will be current events that occurred as recently as last night. I just feel like because those will be mentioned in the next report, I would prefer to just deal with them now while they're fresh. We located a vehicle that was burglarizing cars or attempting to burglarize cars on Aberdeen. The officer got behind it and then it fled from us. It fled from multiple other agencies. We picked it up again and then we discontinued, but that vehicle was located later in the evening in Olathe. Olathe utilized some equipment and stopped that car. The individuals were taken into custody, but this is an example of the brazen, brazenness of these offenders. During that chain of events, when the officers were behind it, those individuals in that vehicle were taking selfies and posting them on Facebook, holding firearms while the police were behind them. That was, that's one example of where we're at right now. Our LPR, our license plate readers are being implemented and being utilized. Last month, a rape suspect was driving through Fairway alerted and our officers stopped that individual. There was an individual that attempted to carjack a lady that was in a neighboring city very close to Fairway. We located that individual in the tunnel. A fight ensued with our officers. Our officers had no injuries. That individual was transported to the hospital and then to jail. He was extremely high. Then last night, a car fled from Prairie Village. They discontinued. They were not in pursuit, but the car failed to yield and entered Fairway, continued on Mission Road and then crashed. One individual was taken into custody very, very quickly and then another individual was taken into custody later on. There were drugs and firearms, a stolen firearm in that vehicle as well. And I don't mean to just bring these up to scare anyone. I've said that before, but this is where we're at. We have violent criminals traveling through Fairway and your officers are finding them. I just want that, I just, I think it's important that you, you understand that's our world right now. And I know you do, but I think it's important that you actually hear it. So thank you for the time. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'll let the report stand.
Any questions for the Chief? Jenna?
Hey Chief, thank you for that update. Not about that, I was just curious, I know you had been doing the welfare check program and I didn't know if that was still going on and I think this time of year people could maybe need that. So how's that going?
The Guardian program actually is somewhat stalled. A lot of that is manpower dependent and then also just situationally dependent on our call volume and how we've been responding to calls. We are still doing the residence checks, home checks and things like that, but the Guardian program does not have momentum right now. But we, if we do and if we are aware of individuals in neighborhoods, we are checking on them and we are constantly out there making contact with residents that we know that need help and that are addressing us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Lee?
Hey Chief, I, quick question. I noticed in the municipal court report that moving violations and non-moving violations essentially doubled or more year-to-date and I was just curious what that's attributable to.
That's attributed to our officers aggressively enforcing and then also some of our officers that we've, we were short for a while, then we kind of got back up. There is a focus on traffic enforcement. Our accidents aren't as high as they have been in the past. And then again, some of the numbers that you're seeing in reference to that is just because of the level of activity that the officers have out there, stopping individuals and slowing cars down and making the streets safe. So I think that that is my style. I want aggressive officers, I want officers stopping criminals and then we also have to pay a lot of attention to traffic. There is a lot of concerns about traffic within the city and I think that the more traffic enforcement and the more education that we can give the public, the better. So in my opinion and the way that I like traffic enforcement to be done, is red and blue lights going will slow people down and it will also alert the criminals that this isn't a good place to stop. Hopefully that answers your question.
Absolutely, thank you, I think it's a great indicator, I appreciate it.
Lee, you have to realize there was a, what seemed like a very long period of time when we were understaffed. Now, I, Chief and I both would have to look back in the records to see if this crossed this period of time, but more than likely it probably did. Could it's only been recently that we've been fully staffed, but we are still short one because of 421020, the active adult community. That individual has not been hired yet for that staff. Am I correct?
We're, yeah, we're still short one and we do need to overhire.
Right. What?
As of next year, we'll have that additional position.
Yes, yes. And Chief, please know that we have every confidence in our officers.
We're well aware of that and we're, again, we're happy to be here, we're happy to serve. We're not stopping, we're not letting up on, on any of our enforcement because we want to keep this community safe.
I know you do. And, you know, I live close to Shawnee Mission Parkway. I have noticed a lot more lights and that, that is a good thing. It's a bad thing, but it's a good thing. Thank you for your report, any other questions? Okay, Public Works, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor, I will also let my report stand as submitted. I would like to point out that we actually did have our first snow event earlier than normal in November. Had a couple inches fall and like Mother Nature always likes to do, it never happens Monday through Friday between 7:00 and 3:30. It happened Sunday morning at about 2:00 in the morning, making sure everyone got to start off their Sunday well, which was followed up by a fantastic showing by the Chiefs, which will leave by the wayside. A lot of this month has also been spent gathering leaves and filling them in dumpsters and making them go away. We started this week working on islands and properties as well, so the street sweepers out there, it's going. It may not look like it, five minutes after we go down a street, it doesn't look like we've been down the street, but I promise it's out there and sooner or later we'll, we'll get ahead of them. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, we didn't use any salt in that event.
We used a little bit.
Oh, you didn't report it.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't have to.
I'm always watching that salt number.
Yes, yes, but we used a little bit to make sure there wasn't gonna be any refreezing, so guys didn't have to come back out. I mean, temperatures ended up getting much higher than anticipated and no cloud cover, so that helped a lot as well. But yeah, we used less than one load per truck, so.
You know I'm teasing you.
I know.
Okay, you smile. All right, any questions for Bill? David?
No question, but just a positive comment, Bill. I know that it is tough for the street, the street sweeper to keep up, but I was out the other day and it came by and it's greatly appreciated, so.
In your area especially.
And I know three hours later, it looks like it hasn't been there still, but you'll be over it quick.
Yeah, and Ward Three with all those big pin oaks, it, you can drive down there and it looks like we've never heard of street sweeping, but yeah.
And I was also impressed that you were out on that snow event bright and early because I had to get my son off and you were there before about 5:00 AM, so that was, that was impressive.
The, every, we have a lot of small communities up here in northeast Johnson County. Everyone treats snow events a little bit differently. I would say, much like the Chief, we're a little more aggressive than other cities that I don't know came in as early as we did or stayed as late as we did, but the guys know how we like to leave the streets and it's running water and free flowing and I can get you out of Fairway, I can't guarantee you past that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bill. Oh, sorry.
Kelly Music, Ward One. I wanted to thank you, we've been using the crosswalk between Shawnee and Mission and it's great. It really, it's really wonderful, so I just wanted to thank you again.
You're welcome. It's, I think, I think it fits in well. I liked how the crosswalk laminate went down. I think that looks nice and I think it fits in the area well and doesn't stick out, but it also sticks out, if that makes sense.
Anyone else? Okay, Parks and Rec, Bryce?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to highlight in my report, the Superpass, Leewood, as I reported, they were discussing whether or not they want to be part of the Superpass in the future and they've decided to step away. Again, that would be a pretty small impact to us. We don't have too many people that went to Leewood and not very many people from Leewood came to Fairway. So overall, they were one of the lowest used. The other Superpass news there is Roland Park will be sitting a year out of the Superpass this year. So it'll be Mission, Prairie Village and Fairway that will be encompassing the Superpass and we are going to an individual system, so it'll align with our, well, everyone's membership structure as well for their city pools, so everyone will have a individual membership, followed with an individual Superpass if they choose. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bryce? Yeah, Lee?
Hey Bryce, it looked like the, a lot of the traffic last season was attributable to the Roland Park Superpass. Do you think this pool is gonna look differently without those folks utilizing that pass?
I think it could. It depends on if they wanted to join the Fairway pool or come as a, as a non-resident, a pass holder or a, just pay the daily fee. So I think we did have a lot of, I think there was maybe some people that were, some families that were in other communities before that that maybe went to Roland Park for their, because they were the only ones with the family structure still in their membership passes. So I think maybe there's a lot of Mission folks and Casey Mo folks that jumped over to, to that area. So they might jump back as well. So we're hoping to see a little bit of a decline just in terms of the amount, the intensity that we had maybe, but I think we are good to go for whatever we find this summer.
Jenna?
Jenna, Ward Four. Not a question, but we went to the holiday celebration at the Mission and it was awesome. There were really good kids' crafts and delicious cocoa, so thank you for that.
Anything else? Thank you, Bryce. Monthly reports to the special committees, Tree Board, Bill?
No report, we'll meet again first quarter.
Okay. Rich, would you like to provide an update on Jenna's?
Actually, I take that back, I have one small report where Rick has finalized all the locations and all the tree plantings for this year for actually three years' worth are going in before the end of the year.
Okay, great. That's, that's a huge accomplishment. Pass along our thank you to Rick.
I will.
Please. Rich, if you'll provide the answer to Jenna's questions earlier?
So Rich Cook, City Attorney, following up on Councilwoman Abrowski's question earlier about Resolution 2023G relating to the 4013 West 62nd, 62nd Street property. The question was, if you recall, you know, is there additional notice required in the event that there's decision made to raise the property? Looked at the statutes and discussed it with Mr. Nogelmeier and there is no additional statutory notice required to... statutory notice required to decide to raise the property. The, basically, the notice is what was in the resolution, which also, you know, provided adequate notice to the property owners that there could be a situation where the property could be raised, and so that is the answer to the question, and I think Nathan will be in contact with the homeowners on a regular basis.
Yeah, I would, so I just mentioned, I was confident that there wouldn't be any notification beyond the resolution, but I would just say this, that, you know, as a courtesy, I agree with you, Jen, I don't think we're going to get there. I think they're going to get stuff taken care of in the House. But if, in the unfortunate situation that they do not, because they have personal possessions within the structure, they would be given ample time to get those out prior to any raising of the home, just because if we don't, if we were just going there and raise it without their knowledge, and as we've learned, as the potential is there, as we've learned from other situations, the personal possessions in there could become a material taking of the city. So we would need to give them ample time to remove what they wanted to first before we do that. And the other thing I would just say is, I would, maybe not at the city council meetings, but at the Administration and Finance Committee meetings over the next series of months, I will be providing the governing body a monthly update on the status of what's going on with that. So I can assure you, governing body, that absolutely no one will be surprised, except for maybe some neighbors, if that day comes, but we will do our best to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you both. All right, we will open public comment for consent agenda items only. I will read those into the record before we do that. Consent agenda is comprised of A, approved minutes of the previous regular city council meeting; B, approved Claims and Appropriations, Ordinance Number 1794, November 2023; C, approved 2024 holiday schedule; D, approved cereal malt beverage license for Hen House; E, approved letter of understanding with Johnson County Aging and Human Services for the 2024 Johnson County Utility Assistance Program; and F, approved 2024 Agreement for Information Technology Services with the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners. Nathan, is there anyone online this evening?